We appreciate everybody's patience. A few minutes to start here. I would like to call the Tuesday, January 21st, 2014 Manistee City Council meeting to order. Please rise to the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shell, can you please take the role?
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Hartwell?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Mayor Potemzaring?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Here.
Councilmember Bestin?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
And finance director?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments and agenda-related items. This is a portion of the meeting if any citizen in attendance has a comment on tonight's agenda. I will note that we do have two slight or three changes to the agenda on the boards and commissions. We are removing the planning commission. There is no vacancy on that. And we did receive two applicants, Mary Neesick, the Downtown Development Authority, and Sherri Wild for the Historic Commission. So is there any citizen in attendance who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? Please state your name and address.
Ross Spencer, Eighth Street, Manistee. Two weeks ago, I talked to you about the Manistee and Albert between meetings. And I made a comment at that time. And I look at the minutes tonight, and all it says is I commented on the minutes. It doesn't say that they were altered. And that was the whole point. So I'd like you to take the minutes off the consent agenda, and you address them tonight, please. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Under new business, letter A, consideration of water and sewer utility rates. You hired this company to do a survey. Now, does that mean our water rates are going to go up again?
They had hired them in.
If they say you should be charging $150 a month, you're going to take that into consideration and raise our rates up?
Not sure I understand your question.
The firm that you hired for the $21,000...
Council will take action on tonight.
They're going to come in and say, "Okay." They're going to come in and say, "You should be charging $20 a gallon."
They're going to do a complete rate study to determine, based upon the American Waterworks Association rules and regulations, and based upon all of the factors of information available to them, as to what they believe is the right rate structure for the city of Manistee for both in-city customers as well as out-city customers. We're hiring them for their professional opinion. Potentially, if council approves at this meeting. Okay? Answer your question.
For clarification, Mayor Kenny and Mitch, that recommendation doesn't necessarily we have to implement it?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Is there any other citizen who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? Seeing now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval minutes, approval payroll, monthly bills, notification regarding next work session, and consideration of annual events for the Manistee Non-Motorized Transportation Committee. Council can take action for the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
Do you want to do discussion?
I move to remove the approval of minutes and discuss the concerns from Mr. Spencer and approve the rest.
I'll second that.
We will remove the approval of minutes from the consent agenda. I mean, everything else will remain.
Correct.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodstead, seconded by Councilmember Goodspeed. Anything else? Shell, can you please take the role?
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzaring?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bestin?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I approve all the minutes.
Just to explore the concerns that Mr. Spencer had, for clarification, could staff discuss what transpired between those two, between those minutes and the, what was actually printed?
The, I'm not sure what meeting date it was. It was December. There was a boards and commissions appointment for the airport authority, and I had advertised for two-year appointment for Mr. Picardi, who was appointed. The term should have been three years, and that's what the change in the minutes was. I showed that it was actually three years because that's the correct term. But when the agenda was made, it had been typed in as two years, so we just put in the correct term.
Okay.
I've been on the December 3rd of 2013 council agenda.
I've already called for it. I think we did note that during the appointment, correct?
On the night of the appointment, it was not made at that time. It wasn't noted that it was three years to the two.
All right. So does council need to...
It was a ten-year in the agenda, and that's how it was read.
And so that's what council approved, so then do we need to correct that? If we approved a two-year versus a three-year?
Well, it's something probably a moot point at this, at this time, since the recommendation was made for Mr. Picardi to be appointed, whatever the term might be. And I think the county commission has already taken action. I suppose, I don't think it would be proper at this juncture anyway, because we have an agenda that's already been approved. I suppose if you felt that you wanted to confirm that the recommendation is for the correct term, we could do it at next month's meeting or next meeting.
Yeah. If you feel that needs to be clarified.
But the county did approve him for a three-year...
I should believe they did.
We do a nomination to the county for that board.
So there's a nomination to the board.
There's the final appointment.
Okay. So there's no need for us to...
For me, it's part of that, but it's also, if there are going to be changes made to minutes, it would be nice to have a notification, so we don't necessarily go through. And as we do with the consent agenda, if we identify there has been a change, maybe we could have a point of discussion to make sure that we're all on the same page with that. Just a thought. So, I know this one is arbitrary and maybe small, but if there are some changes to minutes from what was discussed in the meeting, it could be something more significant. And I would hate to see a discussion that was made not reflected in the minutes, and then they'll be automatically approved. And that's all I was...
I think Mr. Spencer's point to it, which is, I think, well-taken, is that minutes should reflect what occurs at the meeting.
Yes. That's kind of what I was getting at. But if we do make some arbitrary changes to them, let us know or let them know in the next meeting that those changes have been made, and so we're all understanding that those, so they're not being read off as not reflective of what was said before. So, thank you.
And before we move on, I think Mr. Spencer, in his point, I believe he would like the current meeting minutes to reflect that it's more than just he commented, but he questioned the minutes themselves, and there was a change.
You know, thinking back, and I think that's correct, you could do that with these minutes to make that modification, to add Mr. Spencer's comments. I suppose if this council were to make any type of change, the change might be to go back and amend those minutes to reflect that the appointment was to a term that ended up not being the correct term, but to reflect the, what was accurately approved at that meeting. So maybe at the next meeting, we could do that. And then if council as well, if this meeting wants to amend the minutes to reflect in more detail what Mr. Spencer's comments were, I certainly think that's...
So we can change tonight's meeting minutes, and then our next meeting, we can approve the change to the meeting minutes of December 3rd?
Correct.
That was approved? Okay. Is there a motion to change the citizen comments of Ross Spencer to include more detail of his comments?
I'll make the motion. I'm sorry, I didn't get the verbiage, so I'll make a motion on Mayor Kenny's.
Could just the minutes reflect Mr. Spencer's comments, and to be approved at next meeting? And I'll second.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Whitlam, seconded by Councilmember Goodstead, to change the meeting minutes to reflect that Ross Spencer commented on the change in the meeting minutes of December 3rd, from what was said to what was printed. Any other discussion?
I'm satisfied with that.
Shell, can you please take the role on approving the minutes?
Councilmember Hartwell?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzaring?
No.
Councilmember Bestin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Move on to unfinished business. We have none. New business, consideration of water and sewer utility rate study consultant agreement with Burton and Associates. On December 12th, 2013, the city solicited proposals to provide to the city of Manistee a water and sewer utility rate study. Bids were due on January 8th, 2014, with four bids being received. Staff has reviewed the four bids and interviewed the two low bidders to ascertain which firm was best suited to perform the study at the most economical rate. Based upon a review of the requests for proposals, internal discussion, reference checks, and telephone interviews with the two lowest bidders, staff recommends Burton and Associates. The city attorney has prepared and approved this consultant agreement. Is there a motion to take action to enter into the agreement?
I'll make a motion, the council could take action to enter into an agreement with Burton and Associates to perform the water and sewer rate study for a total cost of $21,939, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hartwell, support by Mayor Potemzaring, to enter into the agreement with Burton and Associates. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just one. Maybe you could explain why we're going through this process.
Sure. We had, we had discussed with council in the preparation of the 2013-2014 fiscal year budget, which we're about halfway through right now, they need to do a water and sewer rate study. We discussed that in the budgeting process. We had decided not to budget for that because we were hoping that the SAW grant, which we are approved for the SAW grant, would pay for that rate study and would pay for this one also if we are approved. In our conversations with Manistee Township as we progressed along the lines with Manistee Township in regards to the providing a water agreement or water franchise, it became clear to us that we needed to have a professionally-done water and sewer utility rate study to ensure that through our negotiations that we are appropriately allocating the right cost structure to those negotiations with both in-city residents and out-city residents. Based on those conversations and the need to expedite this process, we have moved forward quickly but expeditiously with doing an RFP, review of the RFP documents, interviewings of the firm. We have been in continuous communication with Manistee Township and the other entities, Little Ravan of Ottawa Indians, Manistee County, about this particular process. We've talked about this with council on multiple occasions about the need for the water and sewer utility rate study.
And just because you don't know water and utility rate study does not mean your rates will go up.
No, but it will tell you based upon your debt load, based upon your usage, based upon your infrastructure, based upon various factors, what the professional rate analysis puts you at. It's very helpful information.
I have a question. During the budget discussion that we have had this year, rural water was mentioned to be, to be used on that, and there's, there's a significant lesson in this.
Well, we...
I hope that was not explored.
Yeah. Well, it was explored. It was explored. And we didn't feel Rural Water would be able to provide the in-depth analysis that was necessary, specifically when we were talking about Manistee Township and Father Charter Township. We felt that it was imperative that we, that we go with a firm that specializes in this from a very strong financial standpoint. Rural Water does it very much from a strong use standpoint, but we needed one that provided strong financial standpoint, and that was the reason that we went in this direction. But it was discussed internally among ourselves.
Okay. So to get, just to reiterate, the study that's going to be done, we're not going to take whatever they recommend as, as by, per se, as a rate increase.
That information will be available to you. I can, I can pretty much guarantee that staff is going to use that information for budgeting purposes, negotiation purposes. We will use that information that's available to us when we're making recommendations to council for future years. So I don't want anyone to believe that this is a report that we're simply doing that we wouldn't be spending $21,000 or requesting or making a recommendation to tonight to look at this. It's ultimately up to city council to determine how that rate is implemented, whether through negotiations with other entities and those agreements, and/or whether it is through the budgeting process which ultimately is council decision as to those rates. So your answer is correct. From a staff perspective, we believe this is going to be very, very useful information for us as we move forward.
Have we done a rate study in the past?
We have. I don't recall doing one since I've been here, but I know the city of Manistee has done one.
I thought we had to do it when we did, got grants and all that for, for all that sewer project. I thought during...
If it was, it wasn't rates for you this week.
No, it was not.
Right. It probably was at Rural Water. Sorry.
Just to elaborate a little bit, I mean, I do an internal rate study every year, and I recommend water and sewer rates, and it's on a cash needs basis. The professional rates that's being commissioned will look at things from a cash need basis, it'll look at things from a cost of service basis, it'll look at things from a utility method of ratemaking, which is what's recommended by some of the state statutes. We also did have to submit a rate structure to the SRF people when they were looking at our stuff. And that's something that they have to sign off and approve, so they look at all of it. I've sent, I've already been in contact with Burton and Associates at their, at their risk, assuming this didn't get approved, and they've already looked at a whole bunch of our data so they can kind of hit the ground running. And it's a very interactive process that this firm does, and council can be involved and should be involved in that, so they understand some of the concepts on the theories of utility ratemaking. The one thing to keep in mind, though, is our bond ordinances and our bond covenants and our, because we're taking grants and that sort of thing, it requires that we operate the system in a method that's going to be financially solvent. And what this rate study is going to do is going to show us what those rates need to be to accomplish that.
Does this also look at future maintenance of the system?
Absolutely. It projects capital needs, it projects bond needs, it's a comprehensive, top-to-bottom study.
Thank you.
Can you please take the role?
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzaring?
Yes.
Councilmember Bestin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hartwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of adopting a Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan and naming the Title VI Coordinator. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and related status provides that no person in the United States shelling grounds of race, color, or national origin, sex, age, disability, or socioeconomic status be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefit of, or otherwise be subjected to discrimination in any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. The Civil Rights Restoration Act of 1987 amended the Title VI to require compliance by all federal aid recipients and subrecipients, which includes schools, colleges, government entities, or private employers, whether their programs are federally funded or not. Also related to the Title VI are Executive Order 12898, Limited English Proficiency, and Executive Order 13166, Environmental Justice, which were enacted to ensure nondiscrimination against low-income populations, minority populations, and persons who have limited ability to speak, write, or understand English. Compliance with the federal and state civil rights regulation is mandatory, and the Michigan Department of Transportation has a responsibility to ensure that every subrecipient has a Title VI plan and LEP plan on file. Failure to comply with this requirement may result in our being placed in a deficiency status, which may jeopardize any pending or future federal funding. The proposal Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan designate city clerk Michelle Wright as the Title VI Coordinator. The draft document has also received approval from the staff at MDOT and now requires city council approval. The final document is due back to the state by February 3rd, 2014. Is there a motion to take action to adopt the Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan?
I'll make a motion, the council take action to adopt the Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan, designate city clerk Michelle Wright as the Title VI Coordinator, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the document.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hartwell, supported by Councilmember Goodspeed, to adopt the Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan. Is there any discussion? Seeing now, can you please take the role?
Mayor Potemzaring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Bestin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Non-Motorized Transportation Committee bylaws. On January 9th, 2014, the city of Manistee Non-Motorized Transportation Committee amended their bylaws. The Non-Motorized Transportation Committee amended Section 2, Purpose, Section 3, Officers, and changed Commission to Committees as needed in the document. Is there a motion to take action to adopt the bylaws?
I'll make a motion, the council take action to adopt the bylaws from Non-Motorized Transportation Committee and authorize the mayor to execute the document.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodstead, supported by Councilmember Whitlam, to adopt the bylaws for the Non-Motorized Transportation Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing now, can you please take the role?
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Bestin?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartwell?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzaring?
Yes.
And Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancy on the border review, the Downtown Development Authority, Historic District Commission, Non-Motorized Transportation Committee, Parks and Beautification Commission, Planning Commission, Tree Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. All appointments by the mayor are subject to council's approval unless otherwise specified by statute ordinance. Nominations for council appointments do not require second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council shall vote on the nomination. Majority vote in favor of placement of the nominee is required for appointment. The filing applications have been received. On the border review, the alternate member, there's one expired term ending 12/31/14, at who can shall be a taxpaying electors of the city who are owners of property assessed for taxes in the city, and at the time of their appointment are neither elected nor appointed officials of the city. This is a council appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Aaron Pontiac of 1003 Engelman Street to be the alternate on the border review.
Do we need a support on that? Do we need...
I think we do on this one. I think it's the mayor or one's...
Do we don't?
I'll go first.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodstead, and support by Councilmember Cody, to appoint Aaron Pontiac of 1003 Engelman Street to the border review as an alternate member. Is there any discussion? Can you please take the role?
Councilmember Bestin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzaring?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The Downtown Development Authority, there's one vacancy for an at-large member, unexpired term ending 6/31/15. This is a mayor appointment. We have two applicants, Brandon Ball of 345 Fifth Street, and Mary Neesick of 700 Birch Street. I'd like to appoint Brandon Ball of 345 Fifth Street to the Downtown Development Authority for an expired term ending 6/31/15. I don't need a, just a vote.
You need to...
I have support by council member Whitlam to appoint Brandon Ball, 345 Fifth Street, to the DDA. Can you please take the role?
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
No.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzaring?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bestin?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Historic District Commission, there are three vacancy, one expired term ending 2/28/15, and two three-year terms ending 2/28/17. This is a council appointment. We have two applicants, Mayor E. Russell of 272 Lighthouse Circle, and Sherri Wild of 700 Millar Road.
That means our council appointments. I would like to appoint Sherri Wild.
I have a motion...
Which one?
For Sherri Wild.
I'm, what, for ending 2017?
Oh, the three-year, the, one of the three-year terms, sorry, to, thank you, ending
There's been a motion by Mayor Potemzaring to appoint Sherri Wild to the unexpired, or to the three-year term ending 2/28/17, in support by council member Goodstead.
I think that we also, with these appointments where we have multiple people for a single position, would allow if someone else wanted to present another name, and then you'd vote on the two names to see if you'd get the majority of votes. That's the way we would have her appointed, I believe. Is that correct, Michelle?
Well, there's, there's three positions, two applicants.
Oh, there's three, you, okay. I'm sorry, then. If you've got, then you can...
The one prior to this, though, the Downtown Development Authority, there was two applicants and only one mayor.
I'll take a role on Sherri Wild.
Councilmember Hartwell?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzaring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
No.
Councilmember Bestin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Is there a second nomination for...
Yeah, I'll nominate Mayor Russell of 272 Lighthouse Circle for the three-year term ending February 28th, 2017. Second.
A motion by council member Goodspeed, support by council member Whitlam, to appoint Mayor E. Russell to a three-year term ending 2/28/17, Historic District Commission. Can you please take the role?
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzaring?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Bestin?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Harkel?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Non-Motorized Transportation Committee, there are two unexpired terms. There were no applicants. The Parks and Beautification Commission, there were two unexpired terms. There were no applicants. The Tree Commission, there was one vacancy, three-year term. There were no applicants. The Zoning Board of Appeals, an alternate member, one expired term. There were no applicants. At this time, I'd like, we can take action to appoint applicants above, and I'd like to authorize Michelle to go ahead and continue to advertise for the vacancies on these boards and commissions. We'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Mr. Barry Lynn, who will report on activities at Manistee Laker Airport.
Again, thank you, council, for this opportunity to present what has transpired at the airports during the course of last year, since I last updated you January of last year. First, I just say it's been an interesting year, but every year, I think, I've been involved with the airport. It's been interesting in one form or another. And I'll point out my cover slide here. You may not be able to recognize it, but the lower left-hand corner is actually a picture. And that is the signage that passengers, as they come off the plane and come into our community, are now seeing. It's something we put up this past year, and we're welcoming them to Manistee, adopting the type of styling that the Visitors Bureau is adopted on our county signs. We've been working very closely with the Visitors Bureau to make sure that things we're doing are working with and coordinated with their, them, in an effort to make sure that we're welcoming to visitors and tourists coming into our community. So just starting off with a quick year-end review of some of the highlights of this past year. First, getting to some numbers. The total number of passengers we had this past year was 5,390 passengers, which was actually about a 10% decrease from 2012. That decrease is really attributable to two reasons. One reason is that 2012, part of that year, we still had service with Frontier Airlines, which was by far our most successful air carrier that we've had. The other reason is that throughout the entire year of 2013, we have been limited in the amount of service we are able to provide. Specifically, we've been only operating flights four days a week. Additionally, we've had daily service and actually had multiple flights per day. This past year, we've essentially either been operating four or five flights a week. That limitation has been imposed upon our air carrier by the Department of Transportation. We have been working since April of last year on approvals to increase our service. We are, within days of that being approved, we're anticipating that in March of this year, we'll be expanding our service back to prior levels. So that 10%, it's not a good thing, but I frame it in this light. With four flights a week, we've been able to roughly carry the same number of passengers as historically we've done operating 14 flights a week. So the flights that we do operate generally are running very comfortably full. We've been accommodating passengers. We've just been limited in the number of flights we can operate. Second item there is talking about the performance of our air carrier. This last year was the best year of performance in all the records that I have. I'll actually go a little bit more into that later with a couple statistics. From a capital improvements side, we were entitled this past year to $1 million in federal funds for capital improvements. Unfortunately, the grant approval process for that took us up until the 11th hour. I believe we were probably the last airport in the state to get their grant approved at the very end of September, which really put us out of the building season for the projects we had intended. So while we have our grant approved, the bulk of that work is going to be happening this coming spring. And then finally, on our efforts is our marketing program. We've spent a lot of time working on marketing the airports. We work cooperatively with various organizations, including the airline, various partners that we have, in making sure that we are positioning the airport effectively to both our community, surrounding communities, as well as, to the extent we can, on the other end of our service down in Chicago and in other parts of the country. And to that end, a big component of this year's marketing efforts have been a completely redesigned website that I have some screenshots from. If you were to go on to our website from Manistee, this is the type of website you're going to see. It's robust, rich in colors, modern, attractive, capability of booking airline tickets right there, showing specials and promoting various aspects of our community. However, if you live anywhere else in the country other than the state of Michigan, you're going to see a slightly different website, and this is an example of that. It's promoting the natural beauty of our community. So between this slide and the next slide, we're showing pictures of our natural beauty. And again, this is in cooperation with the Visitors Bureau, making sure that we have a consistent image and message that we're communicating about our region to the outside world. And of course, if we live here, we're talking about Chicago. But if we live outside of the state, we're really trying to attract people here and using this imagery. Then the next slide, actually, I'll talk about it a little bit here. I mentioned briefly that the capability of booking tickets is on our website. Our flight basically goes from Manistee to Chicago, as you're probably aware, but the capability exists on our website, and this is an example of that, of planning itineraries of travel throughout the United States. So this is an example of a flight from Manistee to Denver. Next month, it's showing you all the flight segments, what the total price is going to be, and walks you through the process of how you would purchase such a ticket. So even though our service is just to Chicago and we're not dealing with a name-brand carrier, we still have the capabilities built into our website to make it as seamless as possible to travel throughout the United States. Switching gears, our service, as I've mentioned before, but it's always good to reiterate and make sure that everyone understands, is provided through a program called the Essential Air Service Program. That program guarantees air service to small rural communities throughout the United States that might not otherwise have it. And there are about 100 different communities throughout the country that are participants of this program. In Michigan, there are nine different airports that are participants in Essential Air Service. And actually, that is nine of a total of 17 airports in the state that have commercial air service. So roughly, a little bit more than half of the airports in the state have support to enable that service. We are the second smallest community, based on county population in the state, that has commercial service. Essential Air Service was enacted by Congress in '78, and I describe it when people ask, it's similar to other federal programs that ensure other types of infrastructure to smaller rural areas, whether that be telephone service, mail service, electric highway-type funding. Our situation is a little bit different. There is a subset of Essential Air Service called the Alternate Essential Air Service Program that we get our service technically provided through. We are the only community in the United States that is participating in this program. We are essentially a pioneer in what we've been doing. The benefits to us in going through the Alternate Essential Air Service Program is that we, as the airport, have much better control and responsibility for our service. Dollars and funding flows through us. We are responsible for various things that, under standard Essential Air Service, the airport really falls outside of. You may ask, why do we have service to Chicago's Midway Airport? There's a few reasons. One is really focusing on why service to Chicago. Traditionally, we've had service to many communities throughout the 50-some years that we've had commercial air service. But Chicago rings true for a couple reasons. One is it is a hub of a lot of tourism-based travel to northern Michigan. There are a lot of ties between the Chicagoland area and northern Michigan that don't exist, for example, between here and Milwaukee, which was the previous hub airport that we had service to. Why Midway versus O'Hare? A few reasons, but I'd say the biggest reason is, is kind of a competitive differentiation. Every airport in northern Michigan has some service to Chicago-O'Hare. We could be another me-too and basically be dividing up a pie amongst neighboring airports. Chicago Midway is a bit different. It provides us access to Southwest Airlines. Southwest Airlines is the largest carrier in Midway. Actually, Midway is Southwest Airlines' largest hub in the country. You can get from Midway to over 70 destinations across the country nonstop. It provides a good alternative. And for those that may be overwhelmed by the scope and size of O'Hare Airport, Midway's a little bit more midsize, a little bit more comfortable, a little bit smaller to navigate through. What's been working well? Well, I already kind of briefly mentioned this, the reliability of our service. During the course of the last year, we had only 1% of our flights were canceled during that time period. That is roughly the average nationwide of all airline flights. So we're kind of right in there in the average. That is far better than traditionally small community airports have from a cancellation rate. Pair that with the fact that 89% of our flights operated on time, and the definition of on time is basically within 15 minutes of schedule. So the vast majority of time, flights occur, and they occur on time coming out of Manistee. Some comparisons, industry average, again, this is across all flights across the United States, the average on-time performance for 2012, which is the latest year I have statistics, was 82%. So from an on-time performance standpoint, we're actually doing far better than the industry as a whole. And as we compare it to what historically has happened at Manistee, it is far, far better. And I got some numbers here for 2010, which was the last year previous to this year, where we had serviced the entire year by the same carrier. And in that year, we had, instead of 1% of our flights canceled, we had 14%. And instead of 89% being on time, only 68%. And again, that, those type of numbers are more typical of smaller airports, when flights need to be canceled because of weather. They generally cancel the smaller aircrafts, those that are going out to the smaller airports, trying to maintain service with larger aircraft. So we've been doing very good, and that's, I really give the credit to our partners and public charters and corporate flight management on providing a very solid product that we should be proud of that we have in our community. Next point is affordability. Fares start at $120 round trip to Chicago, and they top out at $240, which is less than half the price of some neighboring airports in this part of the state for the same similar fares to Chicago. And to top that off, we have free parking, which is always something that, there's nothing like ending your trip, having to, your final insult be to pay that parking ticket as you leave the airport. We don't have that here. And then the last thing I'll mention is convenience. Midway's ideally situated to getting to Chicago. Our flight schedule is such that we've got an early morning flight and an evening flight. We have a number of people that just go to Chicago for the day for business trips from this region, and it works well for them. You're basically just a train ride away from downtown. It also works very well for tourism-based, for our tourism-based economy, whether that's people who live in the greater Chicago area and have a second homes in this area, whether they're here visiting, just to visit for vacation reasons, or whether they're visiting friends and family. Very convenient for that. And it also works for business travelers who have business either from Chicago up here or vice versa. But not, not everything's perfect. We do have some challenges. I've already discussed the limitation of four days a week. We've been waiting, again, on Department of Transportation approval for an increase on that since April. When we started this process in April, or technically when the air carrier started this process in April, the original indications are, by the end of May or mid-June, we should have approval. And it's just been a series of delays, delays since then. No indication that there's ever been any issue with the approval process. It's just kind of bureaucratic, slow nightmare process. Ticketing to destinations beyond Chicago, it's not the smoothest. We've been doing some things on our website, as I was showing, to make it easier so that even though there are multiple steps in that process, we're trying to guide customers through the process so that it's not overwhelming and not only experienced travelers can take advantage of that. And we don't have automatic baggage transfer with airlines in Midway. Primary reason for that is Southwest is the dominant carrier in Midway with over 90% of flights, and Southwest does not partner with anybody. They don't partner with any other carriers either. It's part of their business model to keep their fares low. But these issues aren't preventing people from, you know, using Manistee for their air travel, but it can make it a little more difficult at times. Looking at some competitive airfares from Manistee and other airports in the region, here's an, there's an example of some cities that have basically come out of a report I do for my board meeting earlier this month. And, you know, there's a couple examples of various cities, but probably the bottom row there is probably most important. It's an average of airfares, lowest airfares across 20 different cities across the country. And you'll see that we're competitive. We're in the middle of that mix. So if people have the opinion or the belief, whether, you know, it's for historic reasons or whatnot, that it's much more expensive to fly out of Manistee than Grand Rapids, for example, it's not. Doesn't mean that certain flights, you can always find examples one way or another where it is different, but on average, we're competitive. And if you take the fact that you've got gas and mileage and time to go to Grand Rapids and back, probably parking down there, that wipes away generally any advantage you might see out of flying out of those airports, those other airports. Plans for 2014. We're looking forward to renewing our agreement with our current air carrier. We're looking forward to renewing our agreement with our current air carrier. For, traditionally, we have a two-year agreement. We are looking for this time to try to get a four-year agreement. That is something that Department of Transportation has started doing, a little bit longer-term agreements, so we don't have this kind of constant churn of what's going to happen eighteen months from now, just after you get through, working through one agreement, you're already starting to think about the next, giving a little bit longer horizon. We're going to be continuing our marketing efforts. This year, our focus, last year was website and kind of some broad image-based marketing. This year, it's going to be more working with individual groups, organizations, businesses, and kind of a little more feet-on-the-ground type face-to-face meetings to get the word out there to those that buy air travel or are in the tourism industry where they're receiving the recipients of air travel. Capital projects. Basically, this is the same list I presented to you last year. And again, the primary reason for that is our funding came through so late in the year that we missed the construction season. Without the building that we need to build, we don't have a place to house some of our additional equipment, so those, a lot of those purchases are pushed off to this year. We're continuing to promote general aviation. We're looking at some possibilities for some groups of aircraft to fly in and use our airport this year that will be new to us. One of them, one of those groups potentially bringing in about a hundred people flying in on approximately fifty different airplanes and, you know, spending a couple of days here exploring our community, so that's kind of an exciting thing. And then finally, the last item on the list here is we're starting a process of looking at some business development opportunities around the airport. And we've now engaged with AES, Lines for Economic Success, to try to figure out kind of a plan, that's probably the wrong term for it, but AES's plan is to really bring together the airport, the township, the county, the tribe, the hospital, basically everything is kind of surrounding the airport and see what we can do to leverage the assets we have in that area that ultimately for the airport's perspective can be additional future revenue sources, but also bring business to our community. So that's an effort that's really been just kind of starting, and hopefully we can, we'll know more in the next couple of months as to how we're going to progress on that. And then I always finish my presentations to you with kind of this general list of what's available at the airport. What do we do? We spend, I spend a lot of my time talking in presentations like this and in my day-to-day tasks dealing with our commercial airline service. But in some ways, that's still only a piece of all the things we do. General aviation is by far the largest number of flights that we have coming in and going out of our airport. And under general aviation are things like lifeline flights for the hospital. If it's not coming in on a helicopter and it's coming in on a regular aircraft, it's landing at our facility and transport is, you know, transporting people between the hospital and the airport. Being only a half mile away between the two facilities, that works very well. We have charter and air taxi service that provides direct private charter pretty much anywhere you would want to go throughout the Midwest. We are utilized by business and leisure aircraft, and those passengers and/or aircraft owners take advantage of our hotels and our restaurants and other businesses that surround the airport and are in our community. We have flight instruction and aircraft rental. We also offer sightseeing flights out there. Obviously, commercial airline service, which I've spent a good deal of time talking about. And then, again, we're the only place within Manistee County that has availability for rental cars. So with that, that is the end of my presentation. If you have any, entertain any questions.
Could it just be a perception, but it seemed like when we had serviced to Milwaukee, there was a lot more people flowing through the airport. Is it possible to get a contract with another carrier to other destinations other than Midway?
It's interesting you ask that, and for a couple of reasons. I'll talk first about Milwaukee. What has transpired in Milwaukee and ultimately led to the demise of our service to Milwaukee is the fact that Frontier Airlines has basically pulled out of Milwaukee. What, at one point Frontier had well over a hundred flights a day operating on Milwaukee, now they're down to three flights a day. So they've completely abandoned the airport. It is interesting to note that the largest air carrier in Milwaukee right now is Southwest Airlines. So we can either go to Chicago with Southwest Airlines' largest hub in the country, or we can go to Milwaukee, which is a kind of a minor Southwest outpost. So there's not really a compelling reason for Milwaukee anymore, given the changes in airline service there. The second part of your question, or the second part of my response to your question is in going through our new contract plan for this year, I said we're looking to go to a four-year contract with U.S. Department of Transportation. We are looking to include language in our agreement that gives us flexibility to really provide service to any airport that's a medium or large hub, and that's a technical FAA term as to what that means, within like a five-hundred-mile radius. To give us the flexibility of potentially trying out service to other airports, whether that be Detroit or other larger airports in our region, because there certainly is opportunity there. I would still say I believe Chicago is our best opportunity, but that doesn't mean, especially seasonally, that we might not be able to augment that with additional service to other places. Any other questions?
With all, with the number of passengers that are flying out of Manistee, do we know where we're pulling the majority of our customers from?
Right now, I would say for customers on our end, meaning our end of the line, Manistee, our surveys indicate that probably the largest percentage of those passengers are coming from the greater Traverse City area. Some ways that makes sense, that's where our year's population base is. Manistee proper is second, then Benzey County would be kind of third in that. On the other end, by far, Chicago is the dominant.
I've been on, on some flights coming, going out of Manistee, and it seems like there's quite a few people from Traverse City.
There are.
Because of the free parking, lower cost.
It's the free parking, the lower cost, and I would say also the quality of service. I mean, people enjoy flying out of Manistee for a variety of reasons. But we do a monthly survey of our passengers, and our positive approval ratings usually are ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. We're getting very positive responses, even though there, we know there are challenges and we know the limited schedule has been less than ideal. For the people that it works for, that comply our schedule, comply the days we need to, they have very good things to say.
When I, when I do fly out of Manistee, it's nice because free parking for one, I'm five miles away from home. So five minutes on the one, rather than driving two hours from Grand Rapids or an hour and a half roughly from Traverse City, especially in the winter like this, it's beautiful.
Do you keep any stats on people coming in here for vacations?
That is something we ask in our survey, and as of now, for those that are coming in, the top reasons are generally they're coming in to visit friends or family. They're coming in because they have a second home somewhere in the area. Third is probably business, and then, you know, kind of that pure vacation traveler who doesn't have another reason to be here, that doesn't have a previous tie to the area, is probably fourth. We think that's an area that's ripe for growth, especially given the marketing efforts that the CBB is doing. And actually, this coming year, we're looking at a partnership with area golf courses in our region who are planning on focusing their marketing efforts on Chicago, and there's some natural synergies as us being a transportation conduit for that golf traveler.
Thank you.
Now, it's, you mentioned in the presentation about the baggage agreements.
Yep.
In Southwest, I understand, but it would be nice to have a baggage agreement with Southwest.
Yeah.
Going through their, going through security TSA in, in Midway, it's kind of a cattle drive.
It can be, yes.
Yeah. Though we're still, oh, here though, so.
We've, we've had, we've had some of those conversations with Southwest, and what Southwest has indicated, if we can bring them two hundred passengers per day, they'll talk. You know, we're about ten to twenty, thirty a day, so it's a ways away. But they didn't tell us flat out, no, they at least did give us an admission form.
That's always positive.
There's a goal.
Then one other question, reading about the airport and what we had going on years ago, and don't like to live in the past, but, you know, to help the airport and help the area and community, is there any ideas on festivals like fly-ins or have historic airplanes come in?
Yes.
So a big question.
Yes, I mean, we're evaluating those, those types of things. It's really trying to see how they fit into budgets we have.
EEA.
The EEA would be, would be nice.
Yeah.
But to that end, what I believe we first need to do is build up our local base of users who then are members of those organizations, who then become the committees and the bodies that do the organization and work on those kind of complementary projects. And that's really one of the focuses we're trying to do, is really build up our user base, that we've got a critical mass to do things like that.
Any plans to bring the V-17 back?
There, I have talked to them within the last couple of weeks. Again, it comes, it's going to come down to budget as to whether or not that's going to fit. The last three times the V-17 has been here, maybe it's the last two times, they haven't charged us to be here. This time, they're asking for some fairly not inconsequential fees to attend, so.
Has she come out of Little Run?
Yep.
Question I have for you, I love the new website, it definitely is attractive, I like the way you verse, use it in reverse for people coming in versus going out. The one question I have for you about that, is that the only way to book our airport is through your site, or do the other sites like the Orbitz and all that other stuff have?
We're on Triveloity, Orbitz, Kayak. I think the only one that we're lacking is Expedia, but travel agents can book us, so pretty much any standard distribution channel, but on our channel, we're giving you some value add.
Sure. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Barry. We'll move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are a matter of two five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anybody in attendance who would like to comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Ed Singh, St. Duncan Trucking. I was here for the study session. I was here for the last council meeting. I guess I'm here asking what more are things that are needing to be done to resolve my problem, or how do, how do we move forward from this point? I'm looking for traction, I guess, is...
Yes, the first step would be probably on the agenda, whether council wants to amend the agreement would be the first.
Mr. Singh?
If council wants me to put that on the agenda, I will put that on the agenda. I mean, Mr. Singh has made formal requests of us, not in writing, but we all know what his request is to amend the development agreement. We currently are doing a little bit of research right now in regards to, and City Attorney George Siller's looking at that, I'm not sure if we were to be allowed to discuss that, but we are looking at the development agreement, the MOU. We are looking at that in relationship with Reith Riley and whether or not there's any attachment with Reith Riley, that they will have any, any involvement in this particular agreement. So we are, we are looking at that as we speak. At the last council meeting, we discussed this, there was not a majority of council that wanted to amend the development agreement. Now, I know that was a work session, I know that that wasn't a formal vote, that was just kind of my listening to council members, but I, but I will, I will put that on the council agenda if council would like for us to put that on the agenda. We need to get the information regarding the, the development agreement. Yes, ma'am.
Have we heard anything back on local cities, Grant?
We have not heard anything back on the local cities. We call down, if not daily, every two days.
Personally, I'm not going to proceed until we get that clear.
Okay. There, I'm not, I'm not sure how to push them any faster than, than we're pushing them. We've asked for a written response, and I think that's going to take longer. I think we need a written response to that.
Legally, yeah.
But we have requested that, that of the state, I mean, I can start pushing much harder if need be on that particular issue. And so really, the, the issues are, we really have two technical issues we have to address in order for Mr. Singh to achieve what he was hoping to achieve. The technical issues are the development agreement between the city and Mr. Singh, which prohibits him from having a shipping operation on the east end of River Street. The second technical issue is the zoning ordinance, which also prohibits him from using that zoning district for shipping and such and storage. He has been speaking with Ms. Blakesley about, I don't know if you filed the application to say...
I was there today, I had to amend or correct some numbers on it. She will have it tomorrow. I wrote my check to the city of Manistee for that. I'm pushing forward.
He's making an application to amend the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
But that does not address the development agreement.
Well, I think we need to push those, getting resolved, some answers on those. I think we owe it to Mr. Singh to, you know, address his concerns as soon as possible. And if council members still have questions, I think it's up to their individual responsibility outside those two things to get their questions or information that they need. At least get that information to Mitch so he can make sure.
So you, as soon as we get resolution to these questions, you would like for us to put this on the council agenda for a vote as to whether or not to maintain, alter, or terminate the development agreement?
Yes, I think Mr. Singh deserves, I mean, he's been pushing this, he's gone to the planning commission, he's written a check, I think that shows his commitment to his project, and I think we owe it to him as soon as we can as to our decision for that agreement.
So that would mean either, seeing how we're in the last, we're at the last meeting in January at this point in time, absent calling a special meeting, that would either be February fourth and/or February eighteenth are the two regularly scheduled council meetings in February.
And I would ask that we try and push it for, for the fourth, if we can get resolution on those two.
Thank you very much for your concern, and if anybody has any questions for me, Mr. Singh or Mr. Beck, please call me. I will gladly sit down and we can discuss this with any one of you anytime, day or night. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Do you know, move on to officials and staff, city clerk?
That's your honor.
City manager?
Just a couple of quick things, just following up on Mr. Singh's issue. Again, in regards to zoning, I think it's really important to recognize that there are certain state laws and state rules which really dictate how zoning has to occur. It's nothing the city of Manistee can do to alter. And one of those is, is we have to... And one of those is, is we have to publish a request to rezone 20 days prior to a meeting. So the request by our planning commission is required to be out of the 25 days prior to a meeting, but the statewide, we have to post that 20 days prior to that. So those are some issues that we really can't internally deal with, but have to be done. I think from council perspective, I still think that there's two separate issues here. One of them really isn't, I just really don't see it, I see it as Mr. Singh's request, and I see the separate one as, is the plan still viable, which is really independent of Mr. Singh's request to do so. And I think that's one of the questions council really needs to internally have a conversation on their own about whether or not the plan's internally viable. Are there other ports which currently can be used for the discussion of these new business ventures? Are there other viable ports which are currently within the deepwater ports that can be do You know, what are the impacts? Mishna, there's still those questions regarding Mishna. I will contact them tomorrow and express the, the need for them to, to provide an answer. If I can get a verbal answer, I'll go with a verbal answer and request a written answer at a latter point, and I'll give you the best information we have in order for you to, to make a decision. From a staff perspective, we really won't be making a recommendation with providing information to you and going out from that perspective. On a second note, the DPW director informs me that we are rapidly approaching plowing 10,000, 10,000 miles of street since this winter has occurred. Each one of our trucks has put on a little over 2,000 miles, and then when you throw in some salters and some of the other vehicles, we're quickly approaching plowing about 10,000 miles of city streets. And you put in consideration of that, the city street network is only 48 miles in length. So that's, that's really kind of where we're at. The overtime is still being impacted. I think Jeff is doing a great job, and the guys are doing a great job. His budgets are trying to stay in line to the greatest extent possible, we're having some other savings. We're kind of, as you know, budgets are still flexible, but we're only on January 21st. We've got a lot of winter left. We've had a lot of conversations about snow accumulation. If you think it's just in your front yard, trust me, it's not just in your front yard, it's in everyone's front yard. We are meeting on Thursday with the DDA, talking about snow accumulation in the downtown, some of the businesses. We're getting a lot of requests from residential citizens to come and remove the snow from the edges of their driveway. As much as you want to help, that's 4,000 of them across the city, and you really can't manage that. So there's a lot of requests for snow removal, there's a lot of stuff out there, probably more to come this week, we're going to get considerably more, got about three to four inches today, that just seems to be coming down, but they're doing a lot of plumbing right now, and that's where the main emphasis has been, is keeping the streets safe and passable for residents and visitors.
Is there something that they can do at corners? I mean, it's to the point where you have to almost edge out to see if there's cars coming.
Yeah, that's the priority. The corner clearance is going to be the priority. The corner clearances are going to be the priority, getting those cleared out. So they are working on those when, when they're not plowing and doing the other activities, they'll get, get those corner clearances. Because you're absolutely right, you lose, you lose visual contact with the road at those locations.
That was always a problem, I know, for me at Fifth and Main. It would get so tall.
The temperatures that we're going to be experiencing the next week are also going to render a lot of the salt and the calcium, it's going to render it not effective on the streets, it's going to be too low of a temperature, a melting point for the use of the current salted sand mixture, so we'll be going with a lot more sand for attraction scenario, because the salt essentially won't be able to combat the cold surface temperatures of the road that we're going to be experiencing. We had that blip up, and now it's going to blip straight back down, so the roads won't be there, there's going to be some snow on those with some, the sand on top of those, and that's just really a chemical reason. There is a, there is a, there is a, like so much the salt can do with those situations, so. But if citizens have a question, they can always call the Roger or office, and we'll try and assist them to the greatest extent possible.
How is the, the freezing water mains? Do we have any idea on that?
We, it's not water mains, they're laterals. We haven't had any, we haven't had any water mains, thumbs up. A lot of communities around us have been having main freeze-ups. That's the reason they've been asking the whole communities to continuously run the water, Claire, Beulah, several more, not just those smaller ones. We had a, the week after, the week after the exceedingly cold temperatures, we had four or five, maybe six, boom, where we were having freeze-ups. We haven't had any freeze-ups for the last week, week and a half. We're anticipating after this next cold weather, a week after this next cold weather, is that, is that frost continuously fights with the surface temperature of the soil, pushing its way down, we're probably going to, we wouldn't be surprised if we have another route of those. Where we're primarily having the problems is unheated basements, unheated crawl spaces, unprotected lines going into the homes, and very, very shallow leads. We have a lot of leads that are under driveways, which quickly allows that frost to get to them quickly. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of physical reasons for that, that the city can't control. Some of the property owners can control, some of the property owners can't control. But we're, we're working on those, and currently we don't have any of the water thaw list active right now. Everyone's been, has water back in their homes, and no active, no new freeze-ups have been reported to us.
Now, during the last cold spell, a week ago or so, on a Friday night on Naples, just north of Eighth, city water truck was there, city.
Hey.
Also, there was a welding outfit in the cloud, welding?
Yes.
And they were using the hookup to thaw that?
Yes.
Lateral?
That's correct.
Now, was that through the city, or was that through the homeowner?
Depends on how, depends on whether or not the homeowner was on the run water list or not. If they were previously on the run water list, it's responsibility to the homeowners. If they were not on the run water list, then currently that is responsibility of the city. We are currently looking at that particular policy to, to look at that and making adjustments moving forward. I don't want to make any adjustments right now while we're in the winter of the winter month. I think the time to make adjustments to the water freeze-up policy and snow plowing policy is July, when you're not right in the middle of all those particular efforts. So we are looking at all of those. The cloud, they also have to sign off on a waiver that the city's not held liable if there are any damages with the unfollowing of their water lines.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Highness, Director?
How do you, Your Honor?
Community development? Councilmember Cody?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Member Hong Kong?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Goodspeed? And who comes there?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Whitless?
Yes, thank you for asking. This week, especially today, we had some bad news in the paper. As we all know, Captain, our guardian angel and St. Mary's have discontinued masses, and it all relates into money. I guess with this, we as a community, as a region, have to be proactive in getting jobs into this area. So our churches and our public areas do not close. And the second, last week I went to the city garage about nine o'clock and, for recycling. Mitch, I know we've talked about this in the past, and I know we've installed a camera there, but in the glass, plastic recycle container, people are putting garbage, styrofoam, plastic bags, and if we can put a note in the paper on our website, this will be broadcast on peg, but these people are going to ruin it for everyone. So please, don't do it.
Just a side note to that, I mentioned to Mitch also that the city residents are paying for the recycling, and I've seen people from Mason Colony, Manistee Township, Filer Township coming down there to use our recycling. I, I'm sure they have recycling in their townships or counties, and, but we, the residents, are paying for that through our, our refuge, so I think we should maybe put something down there to let these people know that it's for city residents only.
It happened to me in Manistee Township a few years ago, I took some paper out there, I had my address on something, and about a week later, I received a letter in the mail. So now to, you know, take my paper out there, so.
But they're bringing tires down there?
Yes, and, and the city's on land for disposal, so it's running up our costs.
We have cameras, we could always do the little wall of shame thing.
Or you just have certain hours and manage those hours?
We're having to open those hours. You could, you could, we could clearly have it only open during the hours the Department of Public Works is open and have that gate shut. I think that minimizes the, obviously it minimizes the availability, accessibility to city residents, but, but that could be looked at as an option. I'll talk to Jeff about that.
Or you can, on a Saturday, look for volunteers or something to check IDs as people come in to, each certain hours drop off.
Because you're correct, it's not fair to the city residents.
No. Please put it there, right?
Councilmember Good?
Nothing, Your Honor.
I have nothing, so it's your motion to adjourn.
I'll make that one, so.
Do you adjourn?